It is 7:20. We will reconvene this regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We have been in closed session under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. No action was taken. Welcome. I have every month emphasized how much we appreciate your continued interest and your support of the Waco Public Schools. Let me remind you that it is the board's purpose to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals as management is the sole responsibility of the superintendent and his staff. I also want to welcome anybody watching on WISD-TV at home. Because we've got a fairly large crowd tonight, if you have a cellphone or other electronic device, if you would turn it off, or at least make sure it's on silent, we would appreciate it. And once again, welcome, and we appreciate your being here. With that, before we move on, I think we've got some folks. Dr. Nelson, you wanted to recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I wanted to introduce our good friends and partners from Prosper Waco. First of all, my good friend, Coach Tom, Mr. Tom Stanton. Let's give him a round of applause. Welcome in here. We also have my good friend, Mr. Bill Clifton. And last, but certainly not least, we have the attorney for Prosper Waco and the president of the United Way of Waco, Mr. Mark Hobbs, Abilene Christian graduate, by the way.
You're going to get in trouble.
I got it, I got it. Don't mess me up. Don't get me hurt. Don't get me hurt. Also, the director of Community Engagement, Ms. Christina Heimlich. Let's recognize her. And then also, a member of the administration at The Baylor University, and my good friend, Ms. Ramona Curtis, who is here. So welcome her. I'm sorry, I see also Director of Community Engagement, Ms. Liz Legawa from Prosper Waco. And then another person who's here who's been working with me by day. He works on blended learning initiatives, and we've been working very close together in his commitment to public service. He is a member of the Board of Trustees for the Grapevine-Colleyville Independent School District, my good friend, Mr. Jesse Rodriguez.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Before we move on, a moment of silence. I want our dear friend and longtime counsel Phil McCleary to know that our thoughts and prayers go out to him and his family. And we would ask, at this point, that you pause and join the board in a moment of silence as we pause for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. We'll move on to Item Six, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. De Beer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two fifth-grade students from South Waco Elementary School to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please welcome to Charmee Bell and Jesus de La Garza.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students, and we'd like to thank Tawana Lee for sharing them with us. Tawana is the principal at South Waco Elementary School. Board members, if you would please join us in front of the dais for tonight's recognitions. To begin the special recognition portion of our meeting this evening, we'd like to express our appreciation to tonight's pledge of allegiance leaders from South Waco Elementary School. To Charmee Bell is a fifth grader who loves all of her subjects, especially reading. She enjoys dancing, crafts, and singing in her church choir. Her teacher says that to Charmee is a delight to have in class and very respectful. She sets high goals for herself and she achieves them. We'd like to thank her parents, Gloria Cooper and Terry Bell, for sharing her with us tonight. And if you're here, would you please stand so we can recognize you? Jesus de La Garza is also a fifth grader at South Waco Elementary School. His favorite subject is math, and his favorite activities outside of school are soccer and reading. His teacher describes him as a very respectful and really smart student who always achieves his goals. I'd like to thank Jesus' parents who are with us this evening, Nareda de La Garza and Eram Castillo. Would you please stand so that we can recognize you and thank you for sharing your son? In case you're wondering, both of these outstanding students plan to be lawyers when they grow I'd like to say thank you to Waco ISD's adoptive school partner, Barnes &amp; Noble Bookseller, for donating the books that our pledge leaders are receiving this evening. The next student that we would like to recognize is a state poster contest winner. Tennyson Middle School student Lily B. N. submitted artwork in the Lions Club International Poster of Peace Contest, sponsored locally by the Waco Founder Lions Club. Lily's artwork won the state competition, and she received $500, along with a frame print of her creation. We're very proud that Lily's artwork represented Texas and Waco ISD in a competition with 600,000 students from more than 75 countries around the globe. Lily's art teacher, Sean Knuckles, is joining us this evening, and we'd like to applaud him for encouraging his students to achieve great things. Congratulations again to Lily. She's the first student from Waco to advance so far in this competition. I had the pleasure, a couple weeks ago, of meeting our next group of students that we're going to recognize at the 10th Annual Future Chefs Competition hosted by Sodexo Child Nutrition Services. From Waco ISD and a number of neighboring districts, fourth and fifth graders were challenged with making tasty yet healthy Asian fusion recipes. The students also had to make a creative tabletop presentation with 50 servings of their recipe and answer questions from the judges. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize two award-winning chefs, both fourth-grade students from Waco ISD. First, I'd like to introduce from Cedar Ridge Elementary School, Amaria Elise Butler. Amaria's Kung-Fu noodles won the Made from Scratch Award. And from Lake Air-Monasori Magnet School, I'm pleased to introduce Yandela Medina. Her egg roll in a bowl won the tablescape award. We'd also like to recognize Alma Ramirez, who's the food service manager that assisted with this event. We truly appreciate everything that Alma does every day to ensure our students are fed healthy meals. And thank you as well to Cliff Reese and Sodexo for sponsoring this incredible event for its 10th year. Each year, we bring together more than 1,000 students from all of Waco ISD's elementary and middle school campuses for the UIL Academics Invitational Meet. This year, all 15 elementary and five middle schools participated in competitions ranging from oral interpretation to mathematics to writing and reading events. The competitions are open to second through eighth-grade students, and tonight, I'm excited that we get to recognize the top six overall schools from elementary and the top three schools overall from middle school. We'll be joined for each campus by their UIL Coordinator and their principal, and we'll also celebrate the overall district championship, which is determined by the total number of points scored by individuals and the team. Our 2017 elementary UIL winners are, in sixth place, from Crestview Elementary School, UIL Coordinator Mia Guillen and Principal Jacob Donnell. Our fifth-place team of students came from Parkdale Elementary School, and they're led by UIL Coordinator Sarah Perez. And Principal Marcia Henry wasn't able to join us this evening, so Assistant Principal Canthe Dinsmore is here to accept their award. Fourth-place elementary team Providence Heights is represented this evening by Principal Debbie Our third-place team is Lake Air-Monasori Magnet School. Their UIL Coordinator is Persia Manning, and their principal is Stephanie Tankersley. Mountain View Elementary School was our elementary runner-up this year. Their UIL Coordinator is Hannah Manning, and their principal is Melissa Pritchard. And now, I'm excited to introduce the 2017-2018 Waco ISD Elementary UIL Champions, Hillcrest Hillcrest Principal Amy Matthews-Perez is here to accept their award. In the middle school competition, our third-place team was Lake Air-Monasori Magnet School. The middle school UIL Coordinator for Lake Air is Haley Dean. And returning to the line once again is Lake Air Principal Stephanie Tankersley. Indian Spring Middle School is our middle school runner-up. Please welcome UIL Coordinator Connie Duran and Principal Dr. John Jenkins. And finally, our 2017-2018 middle school UIL Champions, Tennyson Middle School, represented by UIL Coordinator Kelly McDaniel and Principal Lisa Hall. I want to congratulate all of our students who competed in the academic UIL competition this year, and especially thank all of the teachers and administrators who make this event happen. A special thank you to Larry Carpenter, who is the Waco ISD Fine Arts Director for coordinating Academic competitions like the UIL Invitational that Waco ISD hosts each year inspire and enlighten young minds. This culture of enrichment, however, extends far beyond the classroom and helps to prepare students for college. It's, in fact, the type of culture that leads to college scholarships for our student. And tonight, we're excited to celebrate some students who have received very prestigious college scholarships this year, beginning with Waco High School senior Sarah Sriaram, who was recently awarded a Terry Traditional Scholarship by the Terry Foundation. This is an academic scholarship that covers eight full semesters of undergraduate education. And candidates who receive the Terry Scholarship have demonstrated a history of involvement in activities, in community service, and through scholastic achievement. Sarah has demonstrated her leadership skills in the school and community through activities, including National Honor Society, being recognized as an AP Scholar, debate theater, the one-act play, and numerous others. In the fall, she'll be headed to Texas A&amp;M University, where she intends to study, enroll in the Business Honors Program and study biomedical science. And I'd like to recognize Sarah's parents, Diane and Robbie Sriaram, who are here this evening. Would you please stand so that we can congratulate you as well? If you are here. The next group of prestigious scholars that we'd like to celebrate this evening are our Dell Scholars. We have two students at University High School who are among the just 400 selected out of thousands nationwide to be named Dell Scholars for the class of 2018. The students are selected as Dell Scholars because of their GPA, which Dell defines as grit, potential, and ambition. Each scholarship recipient receives a $20,000 scholarship, a laptop, and credits to be used towards textbooks at their college. The University High School Dell Scholars this year are Kelly De Souza. Kelly has been involved in the Avid Program and a member of the orchestra for two years. And in the fall, she'll be attending Dallas Baptist University and plans to major in Our other University High School Dell Scholar is Valeria Rizales, who is also deeply involved in the Avid Program and is on the varsity soccer team. In the fall, she'll attend Texas A&amp;M University and plans to major in business. We'd also like to recognize their avid teacher, Salisa Harrell, and thank her for the incredible job that you're doing preparing our students for college. We're incredibly proud of these students and wish them the best of luck as they head off to the university. One reason why University High School students have been successful is because there's a campus-wide focus on a culture of college readiness, and that's reflected in the school's recent designation as an avid school-wide site of distinction. This designation is extended by the Avid Program. Just 10 high schools in Texas and only 61 nationwide were selected this year for this highly competitive, very prestigious award. And in particular tonight, we'd like to recognize four people who truly make the Avid Program at University High School a success. First, Troy Tenney, who's our Principal for Operations and an Avid Coordinator. Next, Salisa, who you just met and get to meet again. Robin Wilson is the district's College Readiness Coordinator and heads up Avid district-wide. And Dr. Ricky Edison is the principal of University High School. We know that this program reaches beyond just the four people that we're excited to congratulate tonight, and so we want to extend our congratulations to the entirety of the University High School campus for focusing on cultivating this culture of college readiness. It's easy to brag about the fact that Waco High School's mock trial team has had its name etched on the coveted regional trophy more times than any other high school in Region 12. This year, the team swept regionals with a 5-0 record, scoring the highest points in the regional competition. And the Litigating Lions made a run for a state title at the 39th Annual Texas High School Mock Trial Competition in Dallas last month, ultimately finishing in seventh place with a 3-1 record and the fifth-highest point total of the state tournament. I'd like to begin by introducing the seniors on the mock trial team. Tanze Ackerman, who's a fourth-year team member. We have two other seniors who weren't able to join us tonight, Julian Nicholson and Griselda Romero. Our juniors on the team included Thomas Boots Felton, and three juniors who weren't able to join us tonight, Paige Dupuy, Olivia Henderson, and Amar Carr. Also, Junior Matty Lacy wasn't able to join us. The sophomores competing with the mock trial team, Rebecca Heldenbrand. And Rebecca was recognized as the outstanding witness at the regional competition. The mock trial team is coached by Mr. Rick Lowe, who has been the Waco High School Mock Trial Coach for 13 years. He was assisted by attorney-advisor and 2006 Waco High School graduate Kristin Parker. And Judge Ken Starr, who was unable to join us this evening. And as our mock trial team gathers for a photo, I'm pleased to be able to give them, from State Representative Doc Anderson, a certificate of recognition from the Texas If you've ever tuned in to KCEN on a Sunday afternoon, you've probably seen teams of high school students in business attire locked in an incredibly fierce competition that showcases their intellectual powers. The Waco Rotary Challenge is truly a tradition in central Texas. Under the pressure of time and television cameras, students are challenged with questions about worldly topics and current events. And the last time that a Waco High School Rotary Challenge team won the competition was in 1980. So we are incredibly proud to announce tonight that in 2018, Waco High School has reclaimed that coveted championship title. The team members who won this year actually all happened to be juniors, so we're excited to see what the team does next year as they defend the title. Now, please help me welcome Team Captain William Grant, and Matty Lacy was unable to join us this evening. Rick Lowe is also the coach of the challenge team. For all but three years, he's coached the team since 2000, and the challenge team members are drawn from Mr. Lowe's public speaking class. from the TV studio to the basketball court, we're excited to welcome Waco High School's boys' basketball team this year, who ended their successful year with third place in District 18-5A, an overall record of 23 wins and 15 losses, and a run that made it all the way to the third round of the Class 5A playoffs. We'd like to start by introducing Super Syn-tax Boys Basketball Team Honorable Mention Winner, Please welcome Keemon Taylor, All District Honorable Mention Jordan Fuller, All District Honorable Mention Heart of Texas Academic Basketball Classic Award Winner and 2018 Good Grades, Good Hoops All-Star Game Selection Tony Caulfield, All District Second Team Selection and Super Syn-tax Boys Basketball Team Honorable Mention All District Second Team Selection and Super Syn-tax Boys Basketball Honorable Mention Recipient Dale Smith Jr. Like to introduce the assistant coaches for the Lions, Ken La Moudria, Robert Garcia, and Head Coach Earl Farley. This has been an incredible This has been an incredible season, and we're excited to congratulate this team on their success. coach is named the Super SynTech's Coach of the Year. We'd like to ask Coach Farley to return for just a second to celebrate the incredible season that he oversaw, and to recognize that after a struggling season last year, Coach Farley kept his players focused, telling them, "Stay humble, keep working hard." There's no doubt that his wisdom and their hard work paid off, and that he certainly deserves the recognition as Super SynTech's Coach of the Year. Thank you again, trustees.
To the board, thank you, Dr. Nelson. And no action be taken on any issue presented during Audience For Guests unless it's otherwise posted for action later in the evening. And once your 3 minutes are up, we will let you know. I only have 1 person who has signed up to speak, and that is Barry Cryer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Doctor? So, good evening. My name is Barry Cryer, and I'm with Star Air. I'm the Vice President. My wife and I, Barbara, took over Star Air January 1st of 2018 from Randy Taylor. Can you hear me? Is that better? Is that better? The green or the latsch are green. Is that better? Can we start over? Good evening. My name is Barry Cryer, and I'm the Vice President of Star Air. My wife and I took over Star Air from Randy Taylor, January 1st of this year. We are a woman-owned business, and we just received our hub certification as well. On April 2nd, we turned in a bid to change the air filters for Waco ISD. We recently found out that we were the low bid on the project. Then we were in contact with Judy Monroe, and she informed us last week that we were not recommended by the committee for the project, and I would like to ask you to reconsider us for the job. Star Air's bid came in at $79,920.52. The next lowest bid was, or the next highest, or the next bid up to us was $87,000. So, Star Air was 8.3% cheaper to change your air filters. That's equivalent to a little over $7,000 in savings to you as the board. And after sitting through your meeting last week, that's probably a breath of fresh air. Star Air is more than capable of doing the task of changing your air filters for Waco ISD, because we supply filters and change filters for a few cities and a couple of other ISDs as well, along with other businesses. Although the minimum requirements for the air filters that we bid on was a MERV 8, we would use a minimum standard for the schools, which would be a MERV 10. And this will help protect the children and the teachers while attending school, because it's a better filter. We would like to ask that you really do consider using Star Air as your air filter installation vendor going forward, because we supply a better filter at a lower price, and we're committed to service. So, thank you for your time, and we would really like for you to consider us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cryer. I don't believe anyone else has signed up to speak, and that item is on the consent agenda at Item 9C. In fact, we will now go to the consent agenda. The administration has asked me to pull Items P and R. The administration want to explain Item C in the bid?
I would like to table Item C to allow us some more time to review it.
Okay. So, we will pull Item C, Item P, and Item R. Does anybody want anything else pulled from the consent agenda? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of Items CP and R. Thank you. That is their second? Thank you, Mr. DePuy. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Consent agenda is adopted unanimously. We'll go on to Item 10, Discussion Possible Action. 10A, Discussion of Possible Action to Improve the Superintendent's Recommendation for the Local Campus Partnership Application Submitted by Prosper Waco. Dr. Nelson, is that you? All right.
Yes, sir. We recommend approval as presented.
That'll work. Any questions, comments from the board? Ms. Teakell?
I have some things I want to say tonight about this that are probably not very popular. So, everybody's going to have to bear with me. When I get passionate about something, I have a hard time controlling my emotions. Any staff who's here, who was here in August, knows that from the employee orientation. Especially when it has to do with folks that have been involved in the lives of my children. I want to speak to items, really, my comments are to all items A, B, and C, having to do with the application for the partnership by Prosper Waco, and the contract that's being recommended for approval, and the assurances that TEA has asked this board to make, along with the contract and the application. As I've considered my opposition to these items, I have had to consider what I was elected to do on this board, why I chose to run for the board 8 years ago, why I knocked on about The reason I chose to run was because I had become concerned about poor student performance in the district, and what I consider to be the board's and the administration's refusal to acknowledge poor student performance. And as a parent, I wanted better. And when I demanded information and asked for, really, an acknowledgement of the poor student performance that I was experiencing as a parent, I wasn't given the information, and I found the lack of transparency to be very troubling. So troubling that it angered me enough to do what most people consider to be the crazy thing, to run for an unpaid, exhausting, stressful, thankless job of serving on a public school. But ever since my election, I have considered it my number-one priority to serve as a trustee for this school district and this school district only. My number-one priority is to the children in this district and to all the children. I think, first of all, as we consider the contract and the recommendation and the plan that's being proposed by Prosper Waco, everybody can agree, and I think over the last 9 months, this board's discussed, how important it is to us that we maintain local control of our schools, and about how none of our schools be closed. We all feel very adamant. We're all very passionate. We're all to the point of being very angry about the legislation with which we're faced, and TEA's continued threats to close our schools. And I just want to say that I'm not for closing our schools, but I don't think that the plan that's being proposed tonight is in our students' best interests. The solutions to this problem are complex. The answers are not clear-cut. And what I find most troubling is the assurances that TEA is being asked us, is asking us to make regarding our relationship with Prosper Waco, how we have come up with the plan, and what our plan is going forward. The irony to me is, is that we're doing all the work that needs to be done to get these schools off these lists and to meet state standards, and we don't need the paper or to pretend that we need to partner with anybody else to do the work. The work's hard. I believe that in the end, the schools need to be reconfigured to meet the standard that the state is demanding that we meet. My biggest concern about this plan going forward is that we haven't had transparency in the process up till now. I can say that as a parent, I really believe that when I was elected to the board, that I would have an opportunity to change that. And over the last 9 months, have become increasingly frustrated at the lack of transparency throughout this whole process, the lack of information that I have been provided as a board member. When I am provided the information, it's been late. It's not often complete. And when I ask questions, feel like I am discouraged from asking questions again in the future. So, I have a lot of concern about this plan going forward, and whether or not as a board, we're going to be able to provide the oversight and the management that our taxpayers expect us to make. And I want to say that I have nothing against the good people of Prosper Waco, people that I consider my friends, lifelong friends, who are really just doing what they believe is best for this community and for this school district. But I think that this board's being asked to take action on an item that is really not in the best interest of our kids. It allows us to really stretch, to put a square and around hole, and puts me as an individual board member in a really difficult, uncomfortable position of having to make assurances to the Texas Education Agency that are just not true. And I have come to believe over the last 9 months that TEA doesn't really care, that I think that they may believe and know that they're asking this board to make assurances about things that aren't true. They just want our signatures on the piece of paper, but I can say, at the end of the day, they'll come back around and read it back to us if we ever want to say that any of the information in the application or the contract was not correct or not truthful at the time we signed it. So, I actually read a quote by A.J. Crable, who's been, who's the Deputy Commissioner down at TEA. Just last month, he testified, I think he testified, I can't remember where his, where this quote, although I know it was recent, that closing schools as the legislation threatens us to do is not justice for kids. And I don't think that it's justice to this community to pretend that the plan as proposed is any different than this board is, and superintendent is already doing. We hired a good man to do the work, and but for, frankly, all the time he has had to spend dealing with TEA and jumping through these hoops, we'd probably be a little bit farther down the road. So, all that being said, all due respect to my fellow board members. I am not in support of A, B, or C, I think. I've lost my place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teakell. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President, and respectfully appreciate the comments by Trustee Teakell. She's made that very clear along the way. I would like to very respectfully respond to some of your comments. The main response that I would like to enter into the record is, I believe we could not be more transparent in this process. It's funny that you, I think I heard you say Deputy Commissioner Crable is not, he thinks it's injustice to close schools? Oh, well, that's not what he's saying to us. So, he's saying to us, he's going to close the schools. And for me, I happen to agree with him if he said that, and that's why I'm on the record as saying that won't happen on my watch. We have met, I believe our local media can confirm, that we have communicated improvement required campuses, updates, transformation zone updates, I believe, twice a month. We've had meetings starting in October, where we met with hundreds of members of our community. We did it again in January, and our plan is to do it again over the next 90 days. So, we're trying to communicate as quick as we can. The analogy we've used in all of our public and staff meetings is this is similar to trying to build an airplane while the airplane is in the air. So, that's what we're trying to do. The assurances, we are 100% in compliance with all the assurances. And last, but certainly not least, it is my opinion that Prosper Waco should be applauded for being willing to be a partner and basically change, or I should say, adjust, their mission, because they were never intended to be operational. They were intended to serve as a hub for what we call in this community, collective impact. And they've adjusted that solely to keep our public schools locally controlled, where our model is the only model like this in Texas. And this board should be applauded for the way they've conducted themselves, been extremely transparent, and we owe a debt of gratitude to Prosper Waco for their willingness to adjust how they do their business to help us, help our kids. No one wants our kids hurt, and it's real easy to say what's best for kids. But we're in a, we're being asked to color in, a coloring book where most of it's been outlined for us, and we have to stay within those lines. And we've tried to do that. I think our staff has worked extremely hard. The Prosper Waco staff has worked extremely hard. For the record, myself and our Honorable Board President have resigned from the Prosper Waco Board of Trustees, which further allows us to be in compliance, and the Honorable Former Mayor, Mrs. Virginia DePuy. On behalf of the Board President, who I know he can speak for himself, and Mrs. DePuy, we don't have to have a title, we don't have to have a role on Prosper Waco Board to be fierce champions for children in McLennan County, specifically Waco ISD. That won't change, and we won't rest until we've improved our schools. The fact that they've been improvement required for 4 years is unacceptable, and we're working every day passionately to align our curriculum in a way that meets every kid's needs, in a way that is diagnostic and prescriptive. So, I want to clarify my motion, or what I'm recommending, excuse me, I don't have the authority to make a motion, but my recommendation is, we're asking the board to approve the Local Campus Partnership Application Submitted by Prosper Waco with respect to Alta Vista Elementary, Brook Avenue Elementary, J.H. Hines Elementary, G.W. Carver Middle School, and Indian Spring Middle School. And for the record, we're denying the application with respect to South Waco Elementary. Recommend approval as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Pettis, pull the mic towards you.
As we go on to vote, I'm requesting a call vote, please.
Okay. All right, and I will entertain a motion on item 10A.
Mr. President?
Mr. Sykes.
Just a few comments and follow-up to Angela and Superintendent Nelson. We've gone through a long timeline, and as Angela commented, this has been a very complex situation that we're facing, many complex issues. It's apparent that closure of campuses is no one's goal or objective. Our focus along the entire way, in my opinion, has been furthering student outcomes and achievement has always been our highest priority and will continue to be our highest priority. It's clear that there are no guarantees in this process, there's no promises in this process, and as Superintendent Nelson commented, we have the opportunity with this model, which is the only one in Texas, to make it work, to make it work for Waco, and that to me makes it very promising, that will yield results that even several years ago we could not anticipate at this point. Clearly, using redundant words, our pathway is very unclear, but we've got a lot of expertise in the district, we've got a lot of expertise with Prosper Waco. We're very fortunate to be in that position, and I think we need to capitalize on that position. As a result, Mr. President, I move to approve the local campus partnership application submitted by Prosper Waco with respect to Alta Vista Elementary, Brook Avenue Elementary, J.H. Hines Elementary, G.W. Carver Middle School, and Indian Spring Middle School, and to deny the application with respect to South Waco Elementary.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Kristi, Mr. Pettis has asked for a roll call vote, so if you'll just call the names.
Nicole White?
Yes.
I don't think.
No.
Alan Sykes?
Yes.
Pat Atkins?
Yes.
Larry Craig?
Abstained.
Carrie Dupuy?
Aye.
Norman Manning?
Yes.
My count, the motion carries with a result of five yes votes, one no vote, and Larry, that was one abstention?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Item 10B, discussion of possible action to approve a performance contract with Prosper Waco to operate six campuses, and I'm going to assume, Dr. Nelson, that there's going to be a slight modification on that recommendation as well to drop out South Waco.
Yes, I believe it would be clear in the motion.
Okay. Any other comments from the staff at this point? Any comments, questions from the board members? All right, then I will entertain a motion on item 10B, which is approval of the performance contract with Prosper Waco.
I move to amend the contract by striking South Waco Elementary from addendum five.
All right.
Second.
All right, so the motion is to adopt the contract but to strike South Waco from addendum five. Is that correct, Mr. Manning?
Yes, sir.
All right. Larry, would you like a roll call vote on all three?
Yes.
All right. McCutcheon?
Stephanie Corway?
Yes.
No.
Alan Sykes?
Yes.
Pat Atkins?
Yes.
Larry Pettis?
Abstained.
Carrie Dupuy?
Yes.
Norman Manning?
Yes.
All right, same result. Motion carries on a vote of five yes votes, one no, and one abstention. Item 10C is discussion of possible action to authorize the superintendent to provide certain assurances to TEA. Those are in the packet. Dr. Nelson, I guess I want to ask, I know there are two versions, we'll drop out the one with respect to South Waco. Regarding version A, which addresses the other five campuses, are you comfortable, you'll be the one signing it, making those assurances, and you believe they are in fact accurate?
Before I answer that question, I'd like to allow our chief public information officer, Mr. Kyle DeBeere, to respond to that. Mr. DeBeere?
Go ahead and make your presentation, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, we wanted to give you a sense of how the assurances document fits into the larger application process with the Texas Education Agency. There are two submissions that the district has to make to request the benefits of Senate Bill 1882. The first was a Phase One submission, which we completed a week ago Monday. That document outlines the process for how the district will authorize and oversee the charter, but not the substance of the application or the contract granting the charter itself. The second is a Phase Two submission for each of the five campuses that are part of the application and contract that the board has approved this evening. That walks through the application in the form of a document where staff will summarize some of the content from the application. It includes the contract, which includes the application again as an addendum, and it includes the assurances document. The assurances document covers a number of areas in which the Texas Education Agency requires the partnership to meet certain criteria to be eligible for Senate Bill 1882 benefits, either under that statute or the rules adopted by the commissioner. At the point that that Phase Two submission is made, then the process shifts to the agency. They'll conduct an external review by most likely a six-member panel that they appoint May 9th and 10th. TEA will then the following week review the performance contract. They will notify districts and operating partners if they want interviews, and those interviews will lead up to at least a preliminary decision by May 21st.
Thank you, Mr. DeBeere.
Mr. President?
Mr. Manning?
Point of order.
I need to ask you about that motion before we go back into this. Can I ask you something real quick? Because I may misheard your motion. Mr. Sykes whispered in my ear. Was your motion to adopt with the striking of South Waco, or was your motion to amend the contract?
No, no, and that's what, that's what I was getting ready to bring up, that we should vote on striking South Waco, and then we should go back and re-adopt the contract as, with the...
Okay. I'm going to take that bullet, because I think you said amend, and I heard...
Well, I move to amend the contract by striking South Waco Elementary from the addendum five.
Well, that's the right order.
That's right.
What happened was, Mr. Sykes just whispered in my ear, what he said was amend the contract. I heard him say adopt the contract. So I thought, so I restated it as we were adopting the contract with the exclusion of addendum five, and actually what you were asking was, we make that amendment?
Amendment, correct.
All right. So it's clear, because you are, I guess, right, we're doing something different than what was adopted by the other party. We probably need to take both those steps separately.
Right.
And I will, and I apologize for that. I will grant the point of order because I misstated your motion, and, Mr. DeBeere, we're going to come back to the assurances. I apologize. So, Mr. Manning, would you then state, restate what your motion is?
Yes, sir.
With respect to item 10B, and I apologize to everyone.
No problem. I move to amend the contract by striking South Waco Elementary from addendum five.
So all we're doing at this point, you're just asking that South Waco be removed from addendum five?
Right.
Okay, and I apologize again for the confusion. Is there a second to amending the contract?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dupuy. Any comments on that or questions? All right, then, do you want a roll call vote on that amendment, Larry?
Everything.
Okay. Ms. McCutcheon? So all we're doing now is we're voting on just amending the contract. Well, I think I misstated it, and I think so it's clear, we're going to go ahead and make, so everybody's clear on what they're voting on, because I did state it incorrectly.
Do you want to rescind what you misstated?
No. The amendments are going to show Atkins messed up. We're going to put that in bold.
Okay.
Stephanie Corway?
Yes.
Angela Teak?
On amending the contract, yes.
Alan Sykes?
Yes.
Pat Atkins?
Yes.
Larry Pettis?
Abstained.
Carrie Dupuy?
Yes.
Norman Manning?
Yes.
Norman and Alan, again, thank you for the clarification. So that motion carries with six yes votes, no, no votes, and one abstention. All right, and then I will entertain a motion to approve the performance contract as amended.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dupuy. Is there a second?
Second.
I will give it to Mr. Manning. Any comments, questions, or discussion on adopting the contract with Prosper Waco as amended? All right, Ms. McCutcheon?
Stephanie Corway?
Yes.
Angela Teak?
Yes.
Alan Sykes?
Yes.
Larry Pettis?
Aye.
Carrie Dupuy?
Yes.
Norman Manning?
Yes.
And are you abstained again?
Yep.
So that goes five to one with one abstention, and, Mr. DeBeere, I apologize, I appreciate the point of order, Mr. Manning, and we're back down to the assurances. In fact, did you have anything else you wanted to add on the process?
No, that covers where we go from the action that the board is taking this evening.
Thank you, sir. So we are now down to item 10C, which is authorizing the superintendent to provide the assurances, and, Mr. DeBeere, I guess there are two different assurances in the packet, Path A and Path B.
That is...
And we're just being asked to adopt Path A, I guess, at this point.
Correct. The Path A assurances document covers the five campuses that have been part of the application and the contract approved up to this point. The Path B document would apply only to South Waco.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any additional questions, comments, discussion on the assurances set forth on Path A in the board packet? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to authorize a superintendent to provide the Texas Education Agency with the assurance listed in the partnership assurance document for Path A, turnaround partnerships.
Thank you, Ms. Corway. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have a comment. The assurances ask us to, I don't know how I have enough information to make these assurances. How do I know about conflict checks or, you know, the governing body of Prosper Waco changed yesterday? Is there some clarification about when, what are we assuring, who are we assuring, and of what date? Today?
Believe that we are making the assurances as of the submission date, which would be April 30th, that we are making those assurances to TEA, and in the process assuring either qualities of the contract, qualities of the operating partner, or qualities of the process and practice that the district used to select the operating partner.
Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also would respond to trustee Teak's questions that based on our last-minute decision to make changes regarding South Waco Elementary, we now need to go have that conversation with Prosper Waco formally. And so as we do that, we're more than happy in an attempt to be abundantly transparent to review the assurances, make sure that everything we're asking for approval is actually mutually agreed upon with both legal councils and the Prosper Waco Board of Directors and leadership team.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. And I think we've already got a motion that's been seconded. Any other comments, questions? All right, Ms. McCutcheon?
Trustee Corway?
Yes.
Trustee DeBeery?
No.
Trustee Sykes?
Yes.
President Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Thank you.
Uh, trustee Dupuy?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Manning?
Yes.
And that motion also carries with five yes votes, one no vote, one abstention. Reports and discussions? Do you have anything you want to say about that? Do you want to talk about y'all's efforts or anything on what we just did? Are you ready to move on?
Well, if I may, Mr. President, thank you for allowing me to recognize such tedious and meticulous work to make sure that this is a successful partnership. I've already mentioned my appreciation for our local nonprofit community partner under the direction of Dr. Matthew Polk. He and his staff should be commended for being willing to roll with this idea and concept and make sure we keep our schools local. It also, for the record, we need to recognize all of our staff that have worked so diligently in the WISD, not limited to, but specifically, Mr. Kyle DeBeere, who has spent a large amount of time on the performance contract, Dr. Robin McDurham, who coordinated the application process that we went through with Prosper Waco, and last but certainly not least, our award-winning chief financial officer, who will remain the fiscal agent for this activity going forward. So we want the public to know that this is a very, very unique situation. I want to be careful of my words because I know they will be all over the state of Texas by tomorrow, but we want, it's been a unique situation, and our passion has just become more fierce that we protect the Waco Independent School District and its future. And so it is going to require an enormous amount of heavy lifting. Every teacher, every administrator, all the staff that we have, we're going to have to work together and really make sure that we put the needs of our children above the needs and the issues of the adults, and our kids deserve no less, and we're so prepared to work with Prosper Waco, the Texas Education Agency, our good friends at the United Way under Barbara Mosaccio, our good friends at the YMCA, and the list goes on and on, for people that we're asking to join our movement to protect the future of the Waco Independent School District, and we will not rest until our schools are where they need to be for every kid.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. We will move on to item 11, reports and discussion.
Mr. President, we'd like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I think we have to do this because of our Lone Star Governance, I was going to table it, but we have to do it, so go ahead.
So it's 8:30, we will do the Lone Star Governance Continuous Improvement, including elementary English Language Arts Student Performance. It's 8:30. I would also submit, everything since the consent agenda has been...
Student outcomes.
...particularly focused on student outcomes, and all that should be included in the allocation of this evening's meeting.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have our elementary reading coordinator here. We've, she was just recently hired in the last year from the Round Rock Independent School District, and we're so happy to have her as she helps us focus our efforts on literacy and reading, and we're excited about some of the preliminary scores we've seen from our periodic assessments, and as I visit campuses, I often run into this lady who is going campus by campus to make sure that everything we do for reading is very focused and aligned to our curriculum. So with that, with the elementary English Language Reading update, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Donna Trigg. Mrs. Trigg?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Nelson and board. I appreciate the time to come and visit with you. I'm excited about Waco ISD. I know he said I came from Round Rock, but this is home, and I came back here because I do want to see a difference made. I live with these kids every day, and so I am excited to be able to share some of the things that I've been looking at with data. Sometimes it won't look like we want it to look and be exciting, and sometimes it will be, but I think the data that we're going to look at tonight has really opened our eyes to some areas that we can really make some differences for our kids in literacy. So I'd like to start off with the beginning, there's just a quote there, but mainly about puzzle pieces, that reading and literacy, writing, listening, and speaking is so many pieces that are intertwined, so as we're looking at data, to really be thinking about all the processes that kids have to go through. Little bit of my background, my dad was an electrical engineer. He worked for NASA, he sent men to the moon, and something he taught me over and over again, he called it the Failure Mode and Effects Analysis, and he talked about when they were looking at putting a rocket up in space, they would look at every engineer that was out there, and they each had a piece to that, and that each piece had to work and do its job for it to be successful and for those rockets to go up safely. So today, I feel like I'm a little piece of that, and I've found a little chunk in my piece that I'd like to be a part of actually helping and making a difference. When we talk about literacy, we need to remember that what it is, is it's about making meaning. Sometimes we get lost in the ABCs and the print, but as we're talking about this data, we're talking about helping our kids be successful with literacy, with being able to read their world and understand and think. So this slide is something that is one of my favorites, I use it with teachers all the time, but it talks about so many... But it talks about so many of the processes that our kids have to be able to do automatically to be able to read as our adult brains do today. And to do that, we have to build it through a continuum of systems through the elementary years. And our foundation for that is our K5 years, but mostly our K2. Starting with pre-K. So, I'd like to start off with showing you some data that comes from our Smarty Ants program that we just adopted and started using in January. So, it's new information. And just kind of go, go through it and show you where we are with those primary grades. Um, I wish I had a pointer. Yeah, I do. If you notice where it says 519, and you look right under that, you'll see it's blue. That's our pre-K line. And then you'll see our pink, which is a kindergarten line, and the yellow is our first grade line. The lines that are in black are where the kids tested in January. And the numbers on top are the amount of students that tested at that point. So, if we look at the pre-K, in January would have been where that 2 is in that blue line. So, that would have been our children. If you look from left to right, our children above, on and above grade level would be about 75% of this graph. So, if you added up all those boxes on the top. So, our pre-K looked pretty strong in January. And so, we're excited about that because we know the pre-K program is doing some wonderful things right now, and our kids are coming out strong. If we move to the kindergarten, we have the same kind of graph. And so, here you'll notice in the middle of kindergarten where the K is, number four, from that black line over to the right, 40% of our children are on grade level or above grade level. 60% are below. So, we're beginning to see a trend of losing some of our ground. If we flip to first grade, again, you can see first grade is a yellow line. About where the 10 is, maybe a little to the left, would be mid-year January. Our students are 12% above an on-grade level in January. So, by showing you these first couple of slides, I'm hoping that you're starting to see we're deteriorating a little bit here. So, by the time we flip to second grade, it almost is frightening to me. If you look at the second grade green bar, about where the 15 and 16 are, that would be mid-year. That's where we should have been to January. All of our kids are below that. So, when this data came out in January, first thing I did was run to our campuses and say, "We've got to do something, and we've got to do it now, or we're going to have the same kind of problems with our third, fourth, and fifth in the future. So, we really need to attend to this." So, we spent some time really getting kids on Smarty Ants, working with them in smaller groups, and starting to build a stronger K1, 2 with our guided reading program that we've been putting in place for the cup, last couple of years. The next slide shows you about the same kind of data from IStation. So, you're familiar with that. That's what we use for our board goal. If you look, 17, 18, pre-K is 59 up to 71%. So, again, there it shows our pre-K is looking strong. First, uh, kindergarten, 49% to 48, and so on up. You can see that it stays about the same. If you look at the red arrow, it's showing you that cohort. So, that pre-K cohort went from 59 to kindergarten to 48. Kindergarten went from 49 to 45, and first grade went from 44 to 51. So, as we're looking at this, one of the most crucial areas in reading is in our first grade area. They go through many, many levels and pieces of reading that they have to learn with automaticity. So, it brings us to that's where our focus needs to be, is on our K1, 2 teachers. Do you have any questions about that so far? Mm-hmm.
Your, your conclusion is, I found those graphs appear very important, and that is the conclusion I draw. Really, they're, they're, we're getting backward. They're, they're, they're getting more higher line than they're at.
Right.
So, where it starts out there favorably, you see progression there clearly.
Mm-hmm. So, we're losing ground somehow in there. Our kids are starting strong. Um, I know that there's some recent data that came out that Dr. Conrad has talked about where, when we look at where our second grade students are now, which we're seeing are, they're okay, they're a little weak. Their pre-K cohort, when they were pre-Kers, was above the state in, in their scores. So, they were strong. So, we can even use that data to say, "What, what's happening? We're going, we're going backwards." But that's okay because that's what I love is, is literacy. And, and I love working with teachers, and I think that we have some really good things in place. Um, and I'm going to share those with you in just a little bit of some of the things that we're going to do. So, are you-
Yeah, can I?
Yeah.
Sorry. No. Um, just looking at that, uh, as I see the, you know, the, the decrease from pre-K to kindergarten to first to second, um, you know, I know that obviously you're going to tell us kind of what, what we're going to do on campus. But is there any thought to why that's happening? Um, are these pre-K kids going into our kindergarten? Are they going to a different district? Um, i- is it summer slide? What, what, what's hap, do you know, or can you theorize what's happening in that?
Visiting schools and watching teachers and watching things that are going on in the classrooms, I think a lot of times it's in the pedagogy of the teachers, that we're still working on learning what readers really need in those cases. So, that's a big piece that we're looking at putting in place to really help support teachers in understanding, "When I have a, a child who's reading at this level, what do I do to make sure that they're moving forward?" We have the standards, the Texas standards, that tell us what to teach those grade levels. But within that, we have pieces that kids have to understand and build with automaticity by reading a lot um, at that level. And I think by, um, helping teachers to understand that and work in those areas, that we can, we can bring that about.
Okay. So, sorry, another question. So, a majority of the pre-K students who are scoring 75% at grade level or above, are those staying within the district in kindergarten, or do you know that?
Might be. Dr. Conrad, can you help us with that?
This is Dr. Conrad. She's working with our pre-K program.
Good evening. Thank you. Yes, most of our pre-Kers who are in Waco ISD pre-K now move on to our kindergarten.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
So, she has put some wonderful things in place in pre-K, and so, she and I have been working side by side through this because that's one thing we want to make sure is we bridge that and that there's not a gap because they're pre-K and they're not necessarily under, um, the Texas standards for our, um, essential expectations. We still need that bridge there. So, so, I'm going to move on. And having that background, I think it helps us understand a little bit about what happens in our third, fourth, and fifth grade, um, data. So, here we have, um, on the left side, 2016 star and 2017 star side by side. So, with two different cohorts, two different years. And then the, the graph on the other side, because we don't have the 2018 star data in yet, um, we gave a recent DBA. The DBA, the district-based assessment we gave, was actually the release test from 2017. So, in the second graph, what you're looking at is the group of students this year took the same test that the 2017 group took. So, we see some growth, and we see some good things happening. And I think we see that in third grade because we have been recognizing in the past couple of years, building our pre-K 2, 1, 2, and beginning to, uh, notice that we have to put that extra effort in to help our students at these three, five, three, four, and five grade levels.
Yeah, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Dr. Nelson.
Thank you, sir. I know you've moved on to third grade, but I wanted to make sure we talked a little bit about that drop, um, in kindergarten. And, and really, the question is, how many kids in the WISD come to kindergarten and they weren't in pre-K?
That's, that is a question.
So, it's something for-
Kindergarten program's bigger than pre-K, so there may be a bigger pool of kids there, some of which didn't have any early childhood or pre-K.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or sometimes they're coming, the data that we're showing is public school pre-K. So, they may be coming from other areas or not going to school at all. Head start. Did we answer that? Okay.
Go ahead, Dr. Bins.
If I may, esteemed Board, we will get that data for you, of how many students, um, are coming to us, um, in kindergarten without having attended preschool.
Thank you. So, then we move on to fourth grade. And on fourth grade, um, the same graphs are here, or diagrams, that, um, it's 2016, 17 star, and then our DBA compared to our 2017 DBA. Our schools have been working really hard since we've given that DBA. We've put a lot of things in place that I'm going to share with you in a little bit. So, we look forward to seeing those star scores going up. Our fifth grade, it's a different story. But I think our fifth grade, when I look at this, there's, there, they have been away from that foundation program for so long, and maybe those things might have been happening at that foundation program or level, that when we look at what, where fifth grade is, that we really, these kids may not have had that foundation, that they, they needed that strong foundation. So, we've put a lot of things into place too also, to make sure those gaps are filled. Text becomes much more complex, and the language is much more complex when you get to your fourth and fifth grade text. So, if kids are not reading with automaticity and those, using those patterns that they understand about the language, they, they sometimes struggle. So, we've put a lot of effort into, um, working with students where they are in their reading level and bringing them up. So, one of the ways that we have been working with them is through, I had mentioned Smarty Ants earlier, and we've also used Achieve. Um, Achieve, we started in January, and we're really excited about some of the things that we're already seeing from the students. This slide tells you that they have developed over 43 Lexile points. What that means is, um, excuse me. The program suggests, or the fidelity of it is, students will develop at least 83 Lexile points if they do this program for a full year with 80 different activities. Our kids started it in January, and they're already at 43 Lexile points. The next slide also shows that our students that are doing those 40 activities, they are raising their Lexile levels by, um, by 1.5 times. So, not only, but that, so that makes them about 18 points higher than where they should be at this time, although we've only started this mid-year. The way the program works is it puts the kids on a level of Lexile complexity. So, the level of text that they can handle, the complexity, so that they can read it and actually work on their levels and their thinking at their level. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Rodriguez. Would you come up and share a little bit? This, he is from Achieve, and he has been working side by side with us in helping us use this program.
Good evening. Um, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, but just to give you a little background in terms of what Achieve does, what we've done is that we have taken articles or lessons, and we differentiate them 12 different levels for every single article. So, for example, if you all, as the board, were my students, then you would take our Level Set, which is our screener, and that would determine what Lexile level you have in reading. Now, the Lexile, we partner with Metometrics, and they are the ones that are responsible for Lexile. Um, are you all familiar with Lexile? It's, it's okay to say no. I mean, okay, no. What Metometrics does is they have a scientific formula that they've used to look at text and determine the level of complexity and rigor that that text has. And we, as students or as adults, read at different levels. So, what Level Set does, it would give you your precise reading level score that you have. Based on that is what those articles get delivered. So, for example, this group here, you would administer, we would administer Level Set, and you all will then would get a specific level of Lexile. Correct? You follow? From there on, every article that you get gets delivered precisely at your own. So, we would be reading the same article, addressing the same content, addressing the same topic, addressing the same state standard, but it all would be delivered at your precise Lexile. So, what that means is that if you're a strong reader, you might be reading on grade level or above, you get your material delivered right to you at that level. If you're a struggling reader, then you would get that information delivered at your level. So, you're all able to stay within the same class, participate in the same class, addressing the same topic, but again, at your respective Lexile. What the system does, it also has embedded assessments. And as you respond to questions, the system begins to monitor that response, and it begins to increase the rigor and the text complexity. And what we're trying to do is get every student to read on grade level or above. So, that basically, in a nutshell, is what our program does. And we have that from pre-K all the grade, all the way to grade 12. So, I just kind of wanted to give you a little idea. What we suggest is, excuse me. If you, if a teacher utilizes Achieve 3000 lessons at least twice a week for 30 to 40 minutes in class, students will gain anywhere from two to two and a half to three years in one year. That's the guarantee that we, we provide to you. So, youngsters that are struggling will make up that difference. So, if you can complete 40 activities within a semester or 80 within the year, you will see those gains.
So, how does it, I mean, so, in terms of calibrating, does it automatically slightly increase the Lexile as you're reading lessons? Or does the teacher have to go in and retest?
No, no. The, the system does it itself. It's embedded within the system. And what the system will do is based on how the student responded, then the system itself will do that. Now, that universal screener that you administer the first time, you can also administer it mid-year if you want to see the growth of your students or a final year.
If you don't, the system, it's embedded in there where it'll continue to raise.
Yes. And every 30 days, at the end of each month, there's a report that's printed out, and every teacher will be able to see how those youngsters are progressing through, through the system.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Manning.
Yes, sir.
What is the proof behind this? Where, where was this tested? Who was testing it? And, and does it fit our profile for our demographics?
Yes, sir. It, it does. This is, this is, we've been, Achieve 3000's been around probably about 16 years now, going on 17 years. And we've partnered with Metometrics. So, all of the data that you see right up there, it's all based on Metometrics, and all of their data has been substantiated. We can provide you with all that. It's all research-based.
Well, I'm just talking, what, 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 can you give some specifics, school districts there? I know it's hard to find districts that are common, uh, based on us and everything. But I want to know, what school districts have this been used in that has similar demographics as we do and has proven to be successful?
I would say-
I can name you two. Uh, the Jutsin Independent School District, the Laredo Independent School District. Several others. It's, uh, now, I want to say this too, though, to respectfully respond to Trustee Manning. Uh, we- Now, I want to say this too, though, to respectfully respond to Trustee Manning, we decided to do this as a team. I believe it has some experience here prior to my arrival, so I shouldn't take full credit, but we made the decision as we started the school year and understood some of the, our focus on literacy and blended learning. And all of these are long-term commitments that we're trying to embed in our system, but there's one way to learn how to swim. You can ease down there in three foot, or in December, you can train 1,600 teachers and start it in January. And so it has not been without its hurdles, and people frustrated, and people-
So it's been properly vetted through Waco Independent School District?
Properly vetted, and it's all, every place I've done it, Jutson and Laredo, it's always received with marginal enthusiasm. It's something new, it is different, but when we start getting these reports back, we start getting these standardized tests back, we'll look at the data from the standardized tests, then we'll go look at Achieve 3000, and you can start to find some patterns, teacher by teacher. So we're sticking to it, it's not going away. It's what we're going to do, it's part of our transformation plan, for the record. And as we talk about blended learning, early childhood education, literacy, these are some of the types of things where we're headed. So it has been vetted.
And we can supply you a list of school districts. I would say there's approximately 1,100 school districts in the state of Texas, and we're probably in about 65% of those school districts, at various different levels. Dallas, Fort Worth, they have us for every single student, pre-K to 12. Cyfair, Austin, San Antonio, some of the San Antonio schools, Northside, Northeast, South Texas, in the Valley. So just El Paso, Isletos, Acoro.
Not all of those are our demographics, though.
No, and I totally understand, but it covers, I mean, a wide range, and this is, this is a, yes, sir, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm going to let you finish, but I just want our board to know, one of the things we've talked about the most is special education. So how are you going to give content to those beautiful 1,200 students that need reading content at their level? How do you help them improve? Also, how do you take a kid, I don't want to say any names, but let's just say kids who have college-educated parents, and they had a love of reading before they ever walked into the WISD, and they need reading content, and it has to be on their level. So just the scaffolding of how we provide reading content, where a kid, the special ed kid can be sitting next to a kid who's gifted and talented, and they can get reading material at their academic level. That's very important for us to promote our literacy plan. Mr. Rodriguez, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just simply going to say, Metometrics states that you need a 1,300 Lexile in order for you to be able to be college-ready. In order for you to handle material at the college level, you need to be 1,300. I will tell you that on the average, as seniors graduate and they're walking across that stage, most of those youngsters unfortunately are anywhere from about 1020 to 1120, or 1150. If you start looking at our sub-pops, it being special ed, students with dyslexia, bilingual, then those youngsters are falling a little further behind, and they're anywhere from 750 to about 820 or so. So that's the problem, that in many cases, we need to raise that ship a lot quicker and have those students make those gains two, two and a half, three times in one year. And that's what we strive for. So that 1,300 Lexile is very critical. Our focus is college and career-ready. And the same time, though, because they're able to start to read and enjoy what they're reading, all of a sudden, you're going to start seeing these students take it upon themselves because they're being successful. For the teacher, what it does is it allows them to have all of these students with a wide range of reading abilities, and yet it's broken down, and they can just assign the lessons, knowing that they're going to be assigned to those students precisely at where they're reading. So they're successful. Students and teachers are both winners in this case. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Sounds like a great classroom differentiation tool. I'm wondering, you piqued my curiosity, though. Is there a place I can go, and I would like to read a different level, the same ideas you're trying to communicate in the same classroom? I'd like to, I want to see that. I'd like to see your project.
I, yeah.
The other thing that I'm, the other thing I'm curious about, and this is sort of based on my wife's experience in tutoring, one of her biggest problems in math is inadequate vocabulary to grasp the basic issues in the word problem they're being given. I mean, it's, they don't have a handle on the language, they can't use that to interpret that into a math problem. Do you have, is it, does this apply to that as well?
Well, let me say, first of all, we're a reading program, so we don't, we're not a math program. However, every single lesson that we have has a math strand. So there is a problem that's tied specifically to that lesson, and that in itself is differentiated at the 12 different levels. So it's not a math program, but we tie it in to respond to your specific problem.
You can eliminate the problem by increasing your reading capacity.
Exactly. And so we focus on academic vocabulary, we also focus in terms of vocabulary and text context that they can handle based on their various different Lexile levels. Yes, sir.
Okay, so where do I go to read this stuff?
Well, I would love, can we get online? I was going to say, I'm sure your staff can take you online and give you a demonstration, but yes, it's, it, yeah, it will work out, absolutely. Oh, and by the way, if there is a need, it also has in Spanish, too. And we have that across the board from pre-K all the way to grade 12. So you will have that.
You know, I would like to be clear to not only Trustee Dupuy, but really to our entire board, that, you know, I believe in old-school instruction. I believe in planning your lessons and differentiating down to the kid. Having said that, if you know the federal and state, you already know about the state, we talked about that for an hour tonight, the standards are changing. It's also changing at the federal level. And so we no longer have AYP, we no longer have No Child Left Behind, now it's called ESSA. I can't even tell you what the acronym stands for, I should, but it's something, everybody succeeds, every student succeeds. But for the record, there's only about two programs in the country that ESSA has endorsed, and Achieve 3000 is one of them. So as we start to roll out things like blended learning, we really want to start with some research-based best-practice programs. And I've had the opportunity to work with the Honorable Mr. Rodriguez, and I know for a fact that he's passionate about this product, and really committing to make sure that our implementation is, I'm going to say, the best he's ever had.
I will say one last thing. We focus exclusively on nonfiction, and because we, and we do that for several reasons. One, we know that that's what students struggle most with. Second is, if you're looking at STAR, they focus, 2/3 of STAR focuses on nonfiction. And then in our daily lives, we as adults, the majority of us use nonfiction. And so because of that, it's very critical. But because you're doing nonfiction, not only are we addressing reading and writing, but we're also addressing science and social studies. And that's huge as well. So even though we don't have a math component, we do have an activity that's built into each of the lessons. But our focus is reading, writing, science, and social studies. Thank you.
And I'd just like to follow that up with, too. A lot of times I share with the teachers, it's not necessarily a program, it's a resource tool for them. It has the text level for the kids, but the teachers design the lesson, they work on the vocabulary, and they do the engagement piece. So it gives them another resource to pull text from, to be able to work with kids. So it's not about just sitting them on a computer and letting them do another program, it really is about instruction.
Right, but, you know, go over to Carver, and go look at Achieve 3000 lesson, and I understand it's not a program, but, yeah, okay, go check it out, because they feel like it's a program.
Well, the kids, I know that some of the elementaries that I've been to, even just this week, because we implemented it pretty strongly to support the teachers with this rollout for the next tests that are coming out through STAR. And the kids, when you say it's time to do Achieve, are like, yay, we're going to re-achieve. And the teachers are excited because the kids are excited. So that really helps also. So the last slide that I wanted to show you was just that, it's also a community engagement that is out there. The picture that there is from Providence Heights, they had a literacy night. They spent most of their time teaching their community about Achieve, and how to use it at home, how to read with the kids, about how to get signed up on an email, and it sends them messages about how their students are doing. So I think it's also something that involves the community, and it brings our parents So with all that, I just wanted to tell you some of the things that we've put in place this year to really help support the teachers and the students in the classroom. We've been implementing balanced literacy with shared and guided reading. We have reading coaches that are supportive on campuses, literacy aids, writing training and support, literacy continuum training, leveled literacy intervention programs that are put on each campus to actually intervene. It also is another program that addresses a student at their level and helps them to grow with their reading. We have put a big focus on really paying attention to what our TEACs are telling us, and the needs of what our students at certain levels. Again, the Achieve 3000, and we continue to use the I station, which is actually pre-K So going into writing, I was going to go a little bit about process, but what we need to understand about writing, it's not just learning to put words down, but actually-
So if you don't mind, Mrs. Trig, what I would like to do is, I have some separate things I'd like to discuss with the board regarding our writing program.
Okay.
So why don't we use this as a stop and place, and when we pick up, we're going to do a whole separate evening on writing, fourth and seventh.
Okay.
So I appreciate your presentation, and, you know, like we've said, literacy, you're going to hear, you're about to hear us talking about literacy, blended learning, wraparound services, early childhood education, fixing our special programs. When I say fixing, I'm not saying they're all broken. As a matter of fact, our gifted and talented program's one of the best in the state of Texas. You can go research that yourself. It's not something I'm just filibustering or making up. We have seven out of seven distinctions at our secondary gifted and talented program. But we have a career and technical education program that we've invested in a regional manufacturing academy, and we really want to double the number of kids in that program, whether it's WISD or some of our partners. But literacy, and reading, and early childhood, those are part of our battle cry. You'll see a renewed emphasis on wraparound services. I believe Prosper Waco can bring something in that area that we've never done before. So it's exciting times, and for us, it all starts and ends with elementary reading. So it doesn't end there, but it starts there. So thank you very much, Ms. Trig.
Thank you very much. Move on to item 12, announcements, and Mr. DeBeere may have stepped out to do an interview. Do you have any announcements you'd like to make? I know we've got the ribbon cutting tomorrow night.
At 6:15 at the Waco ISD field, the Coach Johnny Tusa and his team will be leading us through a dedication of that. And just on a personal note, if I may, it was exactly one year ago today, with the first pick of the 2017 draft, I was selected as the lone finalist for the Waco Independent School District, and it's been a wonderful opportunity for me and my family to join this beautiful community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson, and thank you. Come on, Kyle, you're up, whenever you're ready, and we'll receive the announcements, and then we'll adjourn for the evening.
Thank you. Well, right now, we're in the midst of early voting in McLennan County for the May 5th city and school district elections. Early voting sites in the county are open from 8 to 5 tomorrow, 7 to 7 on Saturday, and then again, Monday and Tuesday from 7 to 7. And of course, Election Day is Saturday, May 5th, when polling places will be open from 7 to 7 as well. Tomorrow, I don't know if Dr. Nelson mentioned this already, but we're excited about the Waco High School, University High School baseball game, with a ribbon cutting to dedicate the new field. Also, this weekend, on Saturday, we have students in Austin, a large group of students in fact, for the Texas History Day competition. It was great to celebrate those state qualifiers last month, and we're even more excited to bring back some, we hope, national qualifiers next month. Then on May 3rd, we want to highlight the all-district art opening that will happen at the Art Forum at 6:00 PM that day. We have, as you saw to some extent tonight, incredibly talented artists in our district, and we're looking forward to seeing more of their work. The last thing I want to highlight between now and our next meeting is the Summer Showcase that our Student Services Department and Family Engagement Department is working on for May 5th at the Mayborn Museum. It'll start at 9:00 AM that Saturday, free admission to the museum for participating families. But what's really cool is it's bringing together all sorts of different resources from across the community, so that families can see the opportunities available for their students this summer, to keep kids engaged, to keep that summer slide from happening. So it is a busy run from here to graduation, and from here to your meetings next month, but those are definitely some of the highlights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBeere. Any other announcements from the dais? Then we will at 9:08, stand adjourned.